It is seven o'clock and on call the 8/18/2022 City Council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is Pastor Chris Weathers to come down and provide us with devotion.
Thank you, Mayor. Greetings to all of the council and to those present this evening. I want to say hello also from our church family at Lakeside Church. We pray for you guys often as our leaders and believe that the Lord is using you to always instruct you in not only your personal life, but to the needs of the community, making you aware of what's there. And I thank God he's given you the authority to make decisions that need to be made. And I appreciate how you all work together. When it comes to faith, a lot of people talk about faith in action. They'll say faith in action starts with your works or doing things. And certainly faith shows in what we do. But I am learning more and more as a leader myself and a believer in Jesus Christ that faith starts with trust, is learning how to trust, to trust God in every aspect of our life. And so from that ground, I would like to read you a scripture from Proverbs, Chapter 3. And it's also going to be according to what I have prayed blessing for each of you before. But in Proverbs, Chapter 3, beginning at verse 3, here's the word of the Lord. Let not mercy and truth forsake you; bind them around your neck; write them on the tablet of your heart, and so find favor and high esteem in the sight of God and me. Verse 5 continues, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding; in all your ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your paths." Trust in the Lord. The object of our faith means everything. We can put our trust in a lot of objects, we can put our trust in finances, we can put our trust in ourselves. But eventually something there is going to let it go down. But putting our trust in the Lord requires that we even release sometimes the outcomes of our lives to what he is going to lead into. In fact, to lean on him, to lean on our understanding, but to lean on him really brings us to the point where that's where trust says, you've got the outcomes, even if we don't know how everything turns out. I don't know if that's a personal word for you, that the word put in my heart, or if it's just for our own community. We don't decide what happens tomorrow, even though we make decisions around the board. We don't know how everything turns out, but we just trust that God is going to lead our community. And I hope that. Father, I thank you for this council, for our mayor. Thank you for the pigmentaries of our community. Lord, we trust you. Lord, I stand before them as a minister, as a brother in Christ. The Lord is one who also has learned to trust the Lord in everything, to trust the Lord, whether it's spiritual, or if it's physical, or if it's just the decisions that need to be made. Lord, you're the one who gives direction, and from your mouth comes wisdom and understanding. And I've had a blessing of our council and our mayor today, as they conduct business and they discuss the needs of this community, as others share from their hearts what is burdening them. Lord, I just pray that there's clarity of thought and what a real desire that all of us to find that God is leading us. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen. Thank you, again. I appreciate these opportunities again.
Thank you. I introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kelly, please call the line.
Wilkerson?
Here.
Cowherd?
Here.
Brown? Jones?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
We've just got this that we have for Mr. Brown's accent. I'm now on your motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn. Regina?
Stay.
All in favor, please say aye. First item tonight on the agenda is the public hearing to remove the duplexes from R1 zone. Anyone here to speak on the second reading of this ordinance? This is ordinance 052022-1, ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Westmoreland to the city by mini mark V, Section 5.051-1. Anyone here to speak on that? Now's the time to do so.
I would like to know, where is that?
Okay. This is striking the word duplex, it's striking the word duplexes from every zoning section in the city. Except for one, two.
The one that was snookered in up there on Fitch Drive, I mean, for the longest. The builder told us that it's going to be just like the one that built around the corner. Excuse me. And we thought it was just a house, but it turned out to be a duplex, two of them. Not even, not even mentioning all the chaos that's, that seemed like somebody did it on purpose. I'm not saying any accusations to y'all, but somehow they got built. And I remember taking her picture of the building code inspection, and they didn't listen to her. They just said, one, one.
Can you come up here to the podium, Ms. Parker, and speak as part of a public hearing on the record?
And had it been the location before it was okay. We would have all come up here and said, no, we were protesting. Somehow that builder got in there and did all that. And all of us were mad. I don't know if we were alive to achieve it or what, but how does duplexes get built into a whole little house? So I suggest if y'all don't do anything, tell the location, it's like it was left out on purpose.
We have struck the word duplexes from the record under anything that is R1.
Well, I'm just addressing this place here. I don't care what you're doing in the future. How did this get by? Somebody knew. The two people that put the last two water meters in, they didn't even know it. They were upset. And it got that close, about six inches away from the pen of my property. It doesn't make sense. They didn't know it. You know, it was supposed to have been four water meters, only two went in for the longest, till the house was near finished. So y'all think about that. So I can go on and continue to do what I'm doing to keep my property from flooding away. Do you have an answer for that, how it got, excuse me, in there? Did y'all leave? Well, y'all weren't, you weren't here, you weren't here.
This is a public hearing. It's just a time for you to give your comments on the zoning ordinance. You know, if you want to come back and citizens' comments and talk about this other problem, that might be the best place to do that.
Wherever.
Yeah, it'll be just a few days to be a place for public comments, and you can identify yourself.
I'm through.
Because, okay, all right, because this isn't a time to answer questions. This is a time for your comments.
Maybe you can find an answer out.
Thank you.
I wish you would, because I'm not through yet.
Does anybody else want to speak to this ordinance change? My closing. Public hearing, the second reading of this ordinance 052022-1. Entertained a motion?
I saw move. That's the second reading on ordinance 052022-1.
A second.
Mr. Lee, first motion. Alex Jones, second motion. Any discussion on this or not yet? No, I'll go ahead. Ask me.
I have a question. Is this full block, anything from here on out, correct?
Yeah, correct.
What is already in process is in process. We can't stop.
If there's no building permit that's been pulled, there cannot be a building permit pulled for something for duplexes within residential R1 from this point on. Anything that's been pulled already, we can't, we can't control.
I'm clear about that.
Anybody else have anything? Ms. Kelly, call the line, please.
Cowherd?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Second item on the agenda tonight is the public hearing for the rezoning of 5668 New Highway 31E from C2 to R1. Anyone here to speak on that rezoning tonight? Anyone here to speak on that rezoning? Call the public hearing for the rezoning of 5668 New Highway 31E from C2 to R1. To a close and entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 072022-1.
A second.
I have motion, Mr. Cowherd, and a second. Ms. Wilkerson to approve on the second reading of ordinance 072022-1. You may have any questions or comments. Any further discussion? Ms. Kelly, call the line, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Cowherd?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the public comments as they pertain to the additional Regina items tonight. You didn't put out a sign with you, but if anybody has anything, would like to come and address the council, please come up to the podium and state your name and tell us your address so we can have it on the record. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say about the remaining agenda items tonight? The next item on the agenda is the minutes for the 7/21/2022 regular meeting.
I motion to approve the minutes for the 7/21/22 council meeting.
A second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. The next item on the agenda are the minutes for the special call meeting for August 4th, 2022. Any motion?
I motion to approve the minutes for the August 4th, 2022 special call meeting.
Second.
I have motion by Mr. Cowherd and Mr. Lee, second motion to approve the minutes for the 4/8/2022 meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Next item is the June 2022 approval of the financial statement.
Can I make a motion to approve the June 2022 financial statement?
A second.
Jones, and a second by Mr. Lee to approve the June 2022 financial statement. If you may have any questions, all in favor, please say aye. Next item on the agenda is the July 2022 financial statement. Ms. Kish, you provide some notes and ask if anyone has any additional questions prior to tonight. I don't believe anyone did, so I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the July 2022 financial statement.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, and a second by Mr. Wilkerson to approve the July 2022 financial statement. No one have any comments? All in favor, please say aye. We have no old business in Virginia, but the first item on the new business is the financing of the AMI new system. Mr. Ross Colonna from the Comptroller's Office is with us tonight. And I thought Mr. Marshall was going to be here, but he's not here. So, Mr. Colonna?
Colonna?
Like I said, he's here from the Comptroller's Office. If y'all have any questions, you would like to have answered in regards to this process.
I'd like to ask you a question, but I don't know what I should ask. What should I ask of you if you were in my position in terms of, as it relates to the Comptroller's Office?
I'm Ross Colonna. I'm the utility manager for the Comptroller's Office. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and address y'all. We oversee the roughly 450 local government utilities in Tennessee. And so we do, I mean, we do them all from Memphis to Mountain City, all the really big ones, really small ones. So as far as what we do, you know, you have TDEC doing the environmental regulation. We're on the more financial side, the managerial side than some of the technical side. When it comes to the topic at hand of the AMI system, you know, this was brought up to our office several months ago, and we had some discussions about it, and now it's back up. And, you know, the reason that I'm here is to answer, you know, essentially the question that you posed is what should you be asking? And I want to be very clear, I'm not a financial advisor. That's not the purpose of our office. We're just a sound governance and making sure that everyone is asking the right questions. And for me, you know, when we have 450 utilities, I don't know the ins and outs of every single one of them. But based on what I know of your system and discussions that I've had with TDEC, that, you know, a lot of the parties involved seem to think that perhaps more attention should be paid to the sewer side of things and not necessarily the water system. Because I, the information that I use is from your audit. And in your audit, you have a combined water and sewer fund. It's not broken down, so I don't know how healthy each one individually is if it were to be broken out. And when you factor in costs of the project, and keep in mind, I don't even know the cost of the project that you're looking at, but I do understand it is a fairly large project. You know, there are, and y'all are aware, there are needs right now currently and in the future for your wastewater system that are going to have a financial burden on the operation of your system, and there's no way around that. So to not, to not perform in the role of an advisor, I think that it's a simple trade-off that you'd have to look at. And it should be focused, this money here, or should we try to focus it somewhere else, given the current state of the wastewater system that y'all currently have? Because I understand that y'all have one of the last vacuum wastewater systems in Tennessee. And to get that into a position to where it will benefit the community, it's going to take, it's going to take a decent capital investment to get it there. Because our standpoint is, and I hear the Comptroller say it on and on again, you know, utilities, a lot of people, it's the last thing in their mind as long as the water turns on and goes somewhere when you're done with it. But it's the biggest hurdle a community can have to see in any sort of development. And so I hope that answers your question. And really, just looking at things at a trade-off, you know money is going to have to be spent elsewhere in the future. And I'm not advocating against AMI. I'm not advocating against a company. I'm not advocating against it at all. Because when it comes to water loss, I mean, it just makes sense to use some sort of automated system to identify where those areas are. But the caveat to that is as well is, you know, if you're able to use AMI to figure out where the water loss is, there are now costs to fix where that water loss is. It's not like just getting the meters fixes water loss. There still is stuff to be done afterwards, not to mention all the wastewater stuff that has to go along with it. And I want to be very clear, and I hope that you'll understand, I'm not trying to steer anyone in one direction. That's not the purpose of our office or what I do. But I'm just trying to help answer any questions that you all may have.
I beg your pardon. I'm sorry. Well, I was just, go ahead, Kieran.
My only question was going to be, so a lot of the premise and the guys that we've looked at at getting the AMI system is, yes, obviously it's for the water side, but because of the way that we do billing, we also build for sewer. So part of the thought is that somehow or another we recoup some of that money back from the sewer side as well. Is that unwise to think that way, that somehow that's going to benefit us? I realize you're not, I'm not asking you to advise us, but is it wise to go along that way of thinking? Thinking that that's going to help us on the sewer side as well?
Yeah, and so I completely understand what you're saying. And keep in mind, I don't know the specifics. I'm going to say no, because it wouldn't benefit the sewer side of things. Because, you know, the water that goes through the meter is what y'all bill for, and then you build a sewer based on that usage. The AMI, you know, y'all's responsibility isn't fixing the leaks past the meter. It's everything before it. So if the AMI helps identify water loss prior to the meter and y'all fix that, it doesn't necessarily fix the bill. The only instance in which it would help there is if all of your meters were severely under-reporting the water that's going through.
So what can I add to this, since you brought that topic up? So all of our meters, the average age of our meters within Westmoreland are 18 years old as an average. It's been voiced to us from several different sources that after, once a meter reaches the age of 10 years old, it starts losing a percent every year, and it compounds. So the thought process there was that, well, if our meters are not reading accurately as an average, eight percent less than what they truly are using, or what truly is passing through it, then that is a major concern.
Sure.
And a major loss of revenue that the cities have in the source. But is there, that affects our water loss, which then we're not able to recapture that.
Yeah.
We're not able to take that money that would have been billed for the sewer and then deposit it back towards our sewer.
No, I completely agree with that, and that's why I made that caveat at the end. You know, there are, I'm not here advocating for an 18-year-old meter. I know I will. But do y'all, have y'all taken any of the meter, have y'all done like sporadic testing of the meters to see how much they're under-reporting? Has that been?
We have, we do cold meters periodically and test them, and on average, they're five, six successfully.
Okay. Yeah, which is significant. I mean, sure, and I'm not disagreeing that.
Just by basic calculation, what I gathered in doing some rough math was that we are underbilling, or we're losing $112,000 in revenue a year between water and sewer combined, which would account for the inflation. That revenue alone would account for, account for the inflation of this project
Sure.
that we'd have to account for, not to mention, once we're able to identify a couple key water leaks within our system, that frees up a ton of revenue that we're not having to spend to another utility district and just down the road.
Sure.
That we can put back into our sewer systems, not to mention all the sewer that's coming in. We can put that back into our sewer system, you know.
Yeah.
You know, see what I'm saying?
No, and I don't, I mean, I agree with that completely, right? Like that, that line of thinking totally makes sense to me. And that's sort of what I was referring to earlier with the trade-off in just doing a cost-benefit analysis of how much it's going to cost for this project. And, and I'm not here to say that anyone's math is wrong. But, you know, let's say that the meter, all the meters weren't really underbilling as bad as everyone thought it would. It was, you know, that offset right there, you don't, you don't see that same increased revenue that you would have expected, and you're still dealing with the wastewater issues that are running in as well. But, I mean, when it comes to dealing with water loss and sewer revenues, I mean, that's spot-on. Because if it's fixing how much water is actually going through the meter, then definitely.
So can I, I mean, I know it doesn't pertain necessarily to the financing of an AMI system, but I want to ask you this question since I've got you here.
Sure.
And it's convenient for me to ask. So with, with the situat, current state of our sewer collection system, which is, I agree, in terrible shape because there have been some very poor decisions in the history of the way our city has managed that. I hope we can all agree that we're making strides to try and correct that. The first step was with a new wastewater treatment facility. And hopefully, once that is completed and we've gotten that taken care of, then we can start to turn our focus towards the sewer collection, the vacuum sewer collection that we have. Would it be your recommendation to do an entire overhaul of the entire thing at one time? Or would it be a better recommendation, since we've got it broken up, our vacuum system broken up into four main sections of town, would it be your recommendation to start with the most problematic and then move to the least problematic, or vice versa? Just because of the cost.
So I'm not saying this means I can't answer the question. That is a question that if I had the facts, I can definitely address. I wouldn't be afraid to answer that question. At face value, without knowing a whole lot, I would say start in the most severe areas. But there are so many other factors that can influence that. I would really rely on your engineer's opinion on that. And, but that is something, because if y'all, who's y'all's engineer?
He's good.
Okay. So I, I know Allen, I know Allen pretty well. You know, I'm more than happy to talk with Allen about that specifically, and we can, you know, address that and maybe provide some guidance on that. That is definitely a question that I can, I wouldn't feel bad providing advice to it. I think that's something our office can do. We can't tell you to do that, but, but I have no problem. Right now, I just, I couldn't stay with.
With confidence and without having all the information.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I just figured I'd ask since you're here.
Sure.
I mean, it's convenient, why not?
Yes, no, absolutely. And so the one other thing that I, that I do want to address, and luckily for y'all, y'all aren't in this boat, but I do like to let everyone know, and this is kind of the part where everyone gets pretty mad at me. But, so our board that I work for in the Comptroller's Office is the Water and Wastewater Financing Board. Okay, we are the regulatory body over about 282 municipal, town, county, or authority or joint venture systems. The powers that we have are really about financial and managerial decisions. The way that a utility generally comes under our board is after it has a statutory negative change in that position for two years in a row. Westmoreland luckily isn't in that position. I commend you all for that. We have about 100 utilities under us right now, two boards combined. But regardless, all that to say, I want, I- I, I want, I, I don't want this to catch anyone off guard if in several years we do find ourselves in this position based on the decisions that have to be made. But when your audits come out, if you go to your income statement, you go grab that from, from the audited income statement for your utility. You go grab your, your, at the bottom, it's going to say gap change in net position. You back out all of your grants, your transfers in and capital contributions. You take all of that stuff from the, from your bottom line. If that number is negative for two years in a row, um, that starts our process. And what our process is, is we send you a questionnaire, um, about your utility. Um, that it's just some general questions in there that kind of help us understand what's going on. Um, and then after that, our board meets and we issue an order. That order, nine times out of 10, um, is look over all these policies, make sure they're up to date, get a rate study, implement the findings of that rate study. Um, no, no matter what they are. Um, and to put it bluntly, there really isn't a lot of choice in the matter. Um, that, that's just the point of, of our board and what we do. Because the statute says y'all can't have that negative change and the rate study is the easiest way to get y'all out of that unless we refine some. Because we are flexible. If there are other solutions, we'll be more than happy to look at them. Um, but I do want y'all to know, um, it, y'all aren't there right now. And I'm not saying that you're going to be there, but I do like everyone to know, um, what's going on. Because when I look at the gravity of, of the severity, um, of some of the infrastructure challenges that you have and looking at prior cases, I see similar instances and where there were these infrastructure needs where we did have to get involved. And that was one purpose of me coming tonight. I wanted to just let y'all know. Um, hopefully you'll never have to see me again. I'm more than happy to talk to you if you call me, but, uh, but yeah, there's, there's a chance several years down the road that, uh, we'll be revisiting this issue.
I want to very beginning this, this last statement, you said that Westmoreland was not there.
Mm-hmm.
But we're under a state mandate right now.
From TDEC.
TDEC, okay.
Yeah, that, that's from TDEC. Uh, that's on the environmental side of things. Um, their work gets a little more technical. It's a little too technical for me. Um, I'm, I'm a numbers guy and not a engineer guy.
And we do have a utility rate study that's not finished, but we're in the middle of that right now.
That's fantastic news. I wish more utilities were getting those done. Most often when someone comes under our board, they say, when's the last time you got one? They either say never or 10 years ago. And that's pretty much the first way to get financial stress, you just never reduce rates. Especially with the inflation we're facing.
Luckily we had a nice word of wisdom given to us to move, uh, move that direction. Go ahead and get that on, in, in the works.
Yeah.
What, with that said, I know that one of the statements you said that if, if one wants to come into the order that basically unless there was something else that was a better option, that the outcome of that rate study, you would just say do it.
Yeah.
So with that said, whatever we find from this rate study, I just, if it says that you need to do this, should we take it at face value and implement it? And the reason why I'm saying this, if it, if it sounds shocking or it's just hard to believe and we say, you know, we don't want to do it for whatever reason. That's halfway implementing the rate change.
Right. No, so my recommendation is rates are math, right? It's not a political tool. It's just math. So if there is someone who, um, I mean, let me start by saying, obviously do your due diligence, right? I mean, as public stewards, you always have to do your due diligence. But when it comes to professional rate studies by a third party that doesn't have a dog in the fight, it's just math. So my recommendation, um, is one, you know, if you have questions, you ask them. Make sure that if you don't agree with a number, find out why you don't agree with it. Make sure it's accurate. But if everything checks out, um, you know, yeah, it should, it should definitely be implemented. Because the rate study or the cost of service study is there to say, we did the math, your rates are supposed to be this, but they're not. Um, and in a few years, you're either, you could do a 5% raise now or you can do 15 in four years. What would you rather do? Um, obviously I don't know the exact numbers, right? That's just a complete hypothetical.
Sure.
But yeah, my recommendation is especially if, if you've engaged someone to do the work, like, yeah, you should definitely, um, go along with, uh, the, the plan that they present unless you find something just absolutely off about it. And all that to say, if you do get your rate stuff back and you have questions or you don't agree with something and you don't agree with what your consultant's saying, call us. Um, feel free to call me, call the utilities office with the comptroller's office. I'm more than happy to talk, talk, talk about it and I'll even call the consultant and ask questions. Um, you know, uh, yeah, I, I, we're, we're happy to be a resource whenever we can.
Question that I have is something that you can answer and share with this body. This project you said you went familiar with the exact number.
Mm-hmm.
It, it is a one and a half million dollar project. And the terms that we have are the five-year, the seven-year and the 10-year terms with a service agreement monthly. And that, that number can be construed as a large number. It can be construed as a small number.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, if we were to do this over a 10-year loan, the depreciation factor, can you briefly describe that visibility?
Sure, that has to be accounted for the price. Absolutely. And so that is the second way that I usually get kicked out of these meetings when I, when I start talking about depreciation. So, um, I'll probably have to run after this one, but, um, no, so depreciation, um, in my, in my opinion is the utility boogeyman. Um, it's a lot of times if you just understand a little bit better, it makes a whole lot more sense. But when it comes to the principal payments versus the depreciation, back to the income statement, um, in your audit, well, it's, it's technically what the statement of changes in revenues, expenses and net position, but it's the income statement. Okay, um, go to your income statement. If you go look for principal payments, you don't see it on there. Um, you do not see principal payments on your income statement. You see depreciation, okay? And so a really elementary way to think about it is hopefully your principal payment is pretty close to what that depreciation expense should be. Because if you're paying something for, over 10 years, the depreciation of it should hopefully be the same amount over 10 years. Because if it's something that's only going to last for 10 years and you're paying for it a little bit at a time, it should add up the same. So first thing that, and the reason I bring that up is one, a lot of people think that whenever you have depreciation, you're getting double charged for principal depreciation. That's not the case. That's why you don't see principal on those income statements. Um, so with the caveat that you don't see principal in the income statements, you do see the depreciation. So you do have to recognize those, that expense, how it's going to hit your bottom line. And, you know, because it is the depreciation, it's factored into your change of debt position. Oftentimes when there are loans that are considered, um, you know, or, or assets that are acquired, that can lower your bottom line because you're having to pay for that asset over time, even if you got a grant or something for it. Um, because the idea behind it is by, by accurately funding depreciation, um, under the assumption that you never used that depreciation cash for anything else. The idea is at the end of the asset, you've got that whole lump sum ready to buy that thing again. Obviously with inflation, you need a little bit more money. Today you need a lot more money. Um, but the idea is that cash is sitting there. You're going to have that cash reserve. Um, you know, one way, and this is a very crude metric to, to kind of wrap your mind around it is if you were to go to the balance sheet of your audit, you're missing a line item for accumulated depreciation. Here you see your plant accumulated depreciation. Let's say you got $10 million, uh, plant, you have $5 million accumulated depreciation. That means you have $5 million of your plant left. It's halfway depreciated. So, you know, you have to keep in mind, if this thing only has 50% left, how many years is that, that, we've got to keep that in mind. But the other thing is maybe you should go look at your cash and hopefully you have five-ish million dollars sitting there. Um, I want to be clear, you can use that depreciation cash on whatever expense you want. If it's a principal payment, you won't have that cash sitting there. Um, because that cash went to the bank instead of your own checking account. Um, and so that is, um, why people prefer to spend their own cash or get a grant before, before they get a loan. Because at least you're kind of paying yourself that money back. Um, I hope that answered your question.
Good.
So in layman's terms, if you were at 1.5 for 10 years, at the end of the 10 years, we would have, had to have the reg structure or the capital to, at the end of the 10 years to completely refund 1.5.
Right, and.
Billy three billion dollars upfront.
And. But in the instance of a loan, um, you wouldn't have that money sitting in your own checking account. It's just sitting, you paid it to the bank, right? You're, you paid them back. But yeah, you're right that at the end of 10 years, that one and a half million dollars, um, went somewhere, whether it was to your own checking account or, um, or to the bank or the lender, you know, financial institution.
Whenever you say paying it back, that's more along the lines that you more or less paid it upfront and you're then paying yourself back over the 10 years because.
For like, if you were to pay for it on your own with the, like, for the. Yeah, so, um, like an example would be if I gave you, uh, if I, let's say I gave you this one and a half million dollars. And I said, dude, I don't want it back, you know, you, you, here's the meters, like I gave you those meters. I don't want it back. Don't pay me or anything. You have, you still, through depreciation, are still having to account for that money. Even though you're not writing a check to someone saying, hey, here's the million dollars this year, right? It's just money that you're reserving in your own account. Does that make sense? Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Because it's a utility, it has to be maintained or replaced after life.
Exactly, yeah. And so that's why you don't really see this with your general fund or other funds in the code. Utilities have to be, um, accounted for by enterprise fund standards. Um, that's when we get into GASP and GAP and all that stuff. And I don't want to talk about that.
But essentially it's an asset and it has to be accounted for because you know that it has to be repossessed.
No, that's exactly what it is. It's an asset and whereas, um, yeah, uh, I could go on further, but no, that, that's exactly.
So if the life of this, of this, these, this project would be expected to be 20 years, we would have to basically break that total project down to, divide it by 20? And that's our annual depreciation for the project?
A very crude way to do it. I mean, the only, I do want to say this or I wouldn't be doing my due diligence. The only difference would be, let's say out of that one and a half million, there are expenses in that that can't be capitalized such as, most, most expenses are. Whenever you do a big project, most expenses, like even the drawing of like some blueprints or something, that blueprint doesn't last 20 years. But if you were to get down to the minutia, it would just take too long to figure it out. There are relatively few caveats say, hey, out of this entire thing, like you're, like the fee paid to, you know, some third party that it's, it's just an expense. Um, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be depreciated because it's just a third party expense. Um, it's an operating expense. You just see that. But generally the entire cost of it, yeah, it would, over the 20 years, you divide that. And then let's say that you said, I want, I'm going to be aggressive. We're going to get a 10-year loan for something that's going to last 20 years. I want to be clear, I don't think meters last 20 years. I mean, y'all are showing that right now, but regardless, um, you know, in that instance, your principal payment would be more than, than your depreciation, um, and vice versa, if you were trying to do something of the converse.
All right, so would this is a financial question. I'm not trying to ask you to advise.
Sure, no, I'll tell you.
If it were you, if, if, if you were taking on a project of this nature, in terms of depreciation that you would have to account for, it would be better or worse to pay half down and finance the other half over a 10-year period as opposed to financing the whole thing for a 10-year period?
I'm going to throw my same caveat in there that I'm going to try to provide a really broad answer without looking too far into specifics.
Yeah.
First, and I said this before, um, cost benefit, you know, you just have to really see what the benefit is versus the cost of doing that. Really the main thing is, um, and this is actually going to circle back to what I was saying earlier. I was going to sound like a broken record, but pending your cash balance, knowing that you have other stuff you have to do, um, that would definitely sway my decision. Um, if I'm sitting there with, you know, a TDEC order and I'm saying I have to do this stuff, um, you know, it might be better to reserve your cash in some instances. Um, but, you know, once again, the cost benefit, it might say it's worthwhile doing it on, it's worthwhile putting it down. I can't say for this instance what y'all should do. Um, but I, I would just kind of look at everything in general and say, this is stuff I have to do. Um, you know, maybe I might need to reserve some of my cash for other instances, but without looking more specifically, I, I can't say right now.
I have a question for, for along with what you were talking about. If we were to do 50% of this project out of our front balance,
Mm-hmm.
from the comptroller's office perspective, what are the, uh, legal limits that you would be looking at towards the end of the year? To say that, yeah, we passed that test to be approved for this?
Yeah, um, so that would be, when we do our budget review, oh, my boss is going to kill me because I can't remember this, I'm going to remember this percentage. Then, do you remember the percentage for cash flow, what it should be? Was it three? I think it's, I want to say it's like three months. You, that is the bare minimum recommendation. You have three months of operating expenses on hand. Want to say that's really low.
Yeah, normally for business stand purposes, it's six months of liquid cash on hand.
And what I've heard, um, a lot of people say, but I never found like the godfather of this statement is that utilities should have a year um, of operating expenses on hand at all times. I don't know who came up with that. Um, I don't disagree. I think it's a great idea to always have cash on hand, especially, I mean, we saw whenever the pandemic happened, who knew what was going to happen? You need to have that, that liquid cash ready to go. Um, in case people can't pay their bills, but you need that money ready. Um, but for the budget, I want to say, we say three months. So whenever we do our budget analysis, we look at what your operating expenses are. Um, and then your, your fund balance and we say, you need to have at least three months of that on hand. Um, and, uh, if, if you don't, we request, we request a cash flow forecast to make sure that, that y'all are going to have cash, um, to flow through the year because we do get scary calls sometimes. I got a, an email from an auditor a few years ago who sent me an email that I never thought I'd get and he said, uh, just want to let you know this time next year, this utility is going to be out of cash and it was a purchase-only system. Um, so they weren't going to have any money to be able to buy the water to sell to their customers. You obviously never want to be in that position. I don't think y'all are in that position. That's not the point of me bringing that up, but I'm saying that's the importance of having that cash on hand and having a normal cash flow.
So that brings me to another question. So we have, uh, we're taking advantage of the revolving loan fund
Mm-hmm.
in order to finance the wastewater treatment facility. To my knowledge, have we received uh, reimbursement for the, just for the disbursements that we were supposed to have gotten?
We're up to date on them and I think we're 50% of the revolving loan process left. So what they would pay out versus what we've actually backed.
So our fund balance that is for water and sewer should be back to where it's supposed to be correct or where it was prior to us paying out where the revolving loan fund had not submit release funds to us?
We may be one, one tank behind, maybe two, but at one time there were several.
At one point it was about, it was on about 1.5 that we were, that we had not received?
Yeah, they batch them together sometimes and then they're monthly because they're, they use get.
Well, I even said we're 1.5 million reimbursed. We waited on 1.5 million.
Yeah. Um, well, I can say our office, it's a different division that I'm in. We, um, staff the, the TLDA, TECO, Tennessee Local Development Authority, I think that's what it stands for at least. Um, that, those are the folks that, um, help administer the SRF, the revolving loan fund. Um, and I'm really familiar with the folks at TDEC. I'm more than happy to follow up with them to, to make sure y'all are, it's just an email. I'm more than happy to do that for y'all and make sure y'all are good, but I understand what you're saying.
Right, I, I just, I mean, because it, it, that's come up here about the fact that we've, we've paid out, uh, basically paid the work orders or the POs and hadn't gotten, uh, hadn't gotten that a lot mature revolving loan fund. I just wanted to make sure that that was going to be back in the bank. So before you looked at it or that you took that, you were aware of that before you took skewed numbers and looked at it.
No, sure.
And didn't take into account that what we had, because there's over, or, or, before any of that, there was over one year of operating cost in there.
Oh, wow. Yeah, wow.
So
No, I.
Even paying, I mean, it, just based on what you've said, even, I mean, in my mind, that would paying half down should be fine.
Yeah, and I, I want to be clear, our. Yeah, and I want to be clear, or I can't think of, I'm sure I could. Our office, you know, we are all about, you know, financial literacy, everyone being financially solvent, financial health. I don't think, I find a lot of circumstances where I argue you should go for a bigger principal, principal amount, right? Like, obviously, if you get 0% interest, right, there, there's times where that might be, with the caveat that if there are other projects that you have to do, just consider what that's going to do to the cash balance and trying to get that other stuff attained. You have to factor in maybe the interest rate that you're getting offered, the interest rate, because interest rates are rising, maybe if you're going to have to do another project, you might want to hold on to some of those funds to, to put more down on that principal. There's, there's a lot of factors there. There's a lot of stuff in the air to figure out what's the best thing to do. But I would never advocate, yeah, get a higher principal, principal to, right?
My next thing is, so in my mind, and this is why I've been so passionate about this project, is that in any business, efficiency is key. And essentially, in our, in the business of our utility district, our efficiency is out the window with, in terms of how we generate revenue.
Sure.
And if we can't efficiently generate our revenue to be able to make these improvements, then we're, we're going to be visiting you very soon.
Sure.
Because we won't be able to afford to do anything, because our system has been mismanaged for so long. With that being said, I still think, I'm speaking to the council, the rest of the council now, I think it would be a wise decision to move forward with this, placing or paying for half of it upfront and financing the remainder, just so that in the future, in between today and when this current sewer project we have is complete, we're efficiently generating and recouping funds in order to be able to apply those funds to the next consent order that is coming our way. Because otherwise, we're continuing, we're, we're just snowballing in the wrong direction, because we're operating less efficient, bringing in less revenue, less accurate revenue, and incorporating more cost, incurring more cost, rather, to replace some of the ailing and dilapidated systems that we have. I mean, in my mind, that's just, you're asking to, to be up a creek without a paddle. Does that make sense to you?
No, I, I totally.
Does that sound like, like, like sound business, human in, in terms of trying to make a wise utility decision?
Sure. I mean, I, I don't disagree with anything that you said, because obviously, you want everything to be done efficiently, obviously, you want to make sure that you're billing accurately and everything. I, I want to be clear, I don't know every single number that y'all are dealing with. I'm sticking to what I'm saying about, you know, you know the cost benefit, there are other things that are going to have to be done, you know, is this going to generate the benefit that you think it's going to? And I'm not here saying that anyone's wrong. Like, I, I don't even know who's doing the meters, right? Like, it's not like I have some vendetta against someone. I'm not speaking out against anything. And I don't think that there's anything wrong with trying to find some sort of progress in improving your system. I just, there are, I do just have concerns regarding the current infrastructure in your wastewater system. And for me, if you find issues in your water system, yes, they should be corrected. If you find issues in your sewer system and TDEC tells you they should be corrected, they are going to be corrected. So when you, when you get these new AMI meters and you find all of the water loss and you have to do all of this, these infrastructure changes, the cost to fix that part of the system and the water, and, and the, on the water side of things, takes away from the resources that you have to spend on the wastewater side of things, that you're going to be forced to change.
I get what you're saying.
And so that, that really, I, I think that is kind of the best way for me to break down my, my standpoint on the issue. But once again, I, I'm not here to tell y'all what to do. That was never my intention. I hope it didn't come across that way. I, I really just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of tell y'all, from the financial standpoint, the stuff that I've heard, where, where we're at.
Okay. One last question.
Sure.
And then I promise I'll leave you alone, but quit harassing me. If we were to move forward with this project, would that throw any red flags in your office?
I don't know why it would. The, so immediately, no. We, we have to get your debt report on the kind of debt that was issued for it. I think that this would seem pretty cut and dry. I don't know why it would raise a red flag. I might be wrong, you know, I don't have all the details, but I don't think so. The biggest issue that might come from it, and I'm not aware of any of the policies that you have with emails or anything like that, when it comes to bidding things out, you know, purchasing policies, making sure all that's good to go, but I assume this is your attorney, I, I mean, I assume he would advise y'all like, hey, we didn't do this right, so.
Yes.
Yeah. So, no, so I mean, like, as far, that's where we, you know, we'd get your audit, we'd see a finding for, you know, purchasing and all. But for this, based on what I've heard, I don't know why it would raise a red flag immediately, other than pretty much everything I've been saying. It's like, you got this other stuff hanging out, let's, um.
You're saying unless it put us in a financial situation where we were undue burdened and caused ourselves a much worse issue than we were already?
Yeah, and, but we wouldn't see that for a couple of years. So, yeah, that, that would be a, a few years down the road, we'd get that red flag, because we'd have to wait for two years audits, but immediately, I'm really racking my brain to think of one, because I don't want to be wrong. But, yeah.
If we do move forward with this tonight, how quick can we get an answer from comptrollers to get their lesson on, because we're on a time schedule.
Sure. Well, I want to be honest, the debt report approval, all that stuff, that is, that is not my department. It's in the local government finance office that I'm a part of, but I'm really not a part of that process. I will follow up with y'all first thing tomorrow and let you know.
We've got to leave it all to the contract side or process table.
Well, I'll tell you, y'all's, y'all's financial analyst, Steve Osborne, in our office, he's, he's probably the most efficient employee that we have, so you got that going for you. But, yeah, that's just not my wheelhouse.
Mr. Osborne indicated it's only a matter of a few days.
Yeah, that's, I didn't want to say that on his behalf, but Steve's a quick guy. He, he can get that stuff done.
Seems to me that your issue is more whether or not you should do the project as opposed to how you should finance it. I think you would agree that if you decide to do the project, the less money you borrow, the better from the comptroller's office.
I, I think that's a completely rational way to put it.
That's why you have to get debt approved, because you don't want to have more than you can handle.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Talk to you guys about some of the questions he just posed, and I guess we've all got a big picture of the questions that he's posed to us. Mr. Marshall, the utilities consultant with Jackson Ford, met with Kelly, Keisha, and Aaron and myself this week, and gave us, went over our utility structure to verify that that information is what we sent to him, that it was what it was. And when we spoke here tonight to, for everyone to understand what else we may have to do or be required to do in future date, whether that be next week or that be in two years, a lot of things come from that discussion the other day, which would have been completed had it not been a COVID incident, and we'd have had that study available to coincide with this tonight, to everyone who might understand what we're doing. And there's a lot of things in there that do require a lot of explanation, a lot of discussion, that I think that we all need to agree that, that is the directions that we're going to be forced to put our hand to. And if, if this takes us another month and costs us some other percentage on the interest rate, we're not locking up our cash that would potentially be required under some sort of water, wastewater financing program in the future, if everybody understands that. And that's my only advice with what I know if you spoke to understand what is coming. We've been here with the TDEC, took them about seven years to catch up with us, but, you know, they were throwing us bait every day, sending letters of compliance. They were writing plans, we were, we were communicating, we were applying for grants, and we never called it. I mean, then they finally come forward with the agreed consent order and said, okay, we're going to spend $7 million and go on building.
So to that point, whenever they, I know you're not with TDEC.
Sure, I'll try.
Before, is there something before, because I wasn't here, I wasn't on this board at that point, is, whenever, whenever he's talking, what he's talking about. Before a consent order, what takes place before a consent order is placed on a community?
So I, I want to be very clear, like you said, I'm not with TDEC.
Right, right, right.
Based on the experience that I have with them, you know, they do send out NOBs as a violation, an NOBs. I don't know how often those go out, but sometimes I'm notified of them, sometimes I'm not. But from my understanding, you know, it's phone calls, NOBs, and then that's when there's a consent decree. And it, those NOBs, you know, depending on the severity, they might immediately, or very short after, result in an order, or it might take several NOBs before you get an order, depending on the severity. Someone from TDEC might have told me that, I just lied to y'all, but from my understanding, that's how it all works.
That's pretty much how that happened. We were given opportunities to write letters, write plans, and apply for grants, and show that we were heading in the correct direction, that we were wholly unable to.
Couldn't agree to, couldn't agree to move forward.
Couldn't catch up, couldn't catch up with it.
So when, if, if, as long as you make a, as long as, what if, what if, if you're showing an effort to address the consent order before the consent order's placed on you, if you, if you're showing an effort to address that, and a, and a consistent effort, could that ward off a consent order? Or, I mean, because obviously, I'm not, like I said, I'm not, I wasn't here then.
Sure.
But obviously, applying for grants and just talking about it are not going to go anywhere, because you're not really doing anything, you're just talking about it. But if you're making an active, showing an active, a proactive approach to addressing it prior to them, or even after they have sent you the initial phone call or the NOB, has it, has it been your experience with other communities that they would still place a consent order on you?
I will say that I don't know that one. I haven't really come across that. I'd be happy to tell you if I knew, but really, I just couldn't answer that one for you.
Okay, okay, that's fine. And I appreciate your honesty.
Sure.
But from, from your perspective, from the comptroller's office, two consecutive years in the red, initiate your process, no matter what.
Yeah, yeah, there's no way around that. I mean, because like I said about the rates, it's math. There's just no.
No matter what the actions are in the day, we're in the red two years from now.
You're, you're.
And even that, I mean, at the end of the day, what it really says if we're in the red is literally it costs more to operate and do what we're doing than we're bringing in.
Exactly. That's my line.
And that's a problem that we, and what you were saying, you take grant money and all that, because we don't operate on grant money, that's just about.
It's a one-time thing, yeah.
And so that's not part of our cash inflow that we're getting from, basically, it's not the money we're making, we're obviously not making money, but we're, the money that we're taking in to pay for the money that we paid to get the water bill, or we paid to treat the sewer, whichever one.
Exactly. No, that, that's precisely it. I mean, it's nailed with that, so.
And I want everybody to understand.
Realize.
I just want to say something about the consent order, we had this comment made about the consent order, now you're not with TDEC. Consent order by definition means we consented to the order. We don't have to consent to them. They don't put a consent order on you. They threaten to put an order on you that may not be what you want to happen. And then you negotiate with them, and the consent order means that we've agreed with TDEC as to what our course of action is going to be over the next few years. So when it's a consent order, we've agreed to it. This is not put on us. So we have some flexibility in what we agreed to. We shouldn't be agreeing things we can do. And TDEC is not going to typically expect us to agree to things we simply cannot do. But the effort we're making and what we've done is very important to TDEC. If you're not showing progress, you're in real trouble.
Got you, got you, got you, got you. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And I would just like everybody to have the opportunity to understand what some of those things are. Though that list, that list is what we, like, we'd be prepared to have the conversation tonight. But I want to use a very harsh example. In some of this information, that if this project is funded 100%, it will lower our fund balance to $40,000 a year. That's one top, away from emergency purchase to going into the red. We would, without a red, just with our structure of E-type, that's going to cause us a red.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't lower us to, that wouldn't lower us to $40,000? Do we were talking about this evening, that wouldn't lower?
With our other obligations in the funds. And that's what I want everybody to understand those. So if you borrowed half the money, you're going to lower your fund balance per year with our undercurrent obligations to $80,000. And that's.
Still incorrect.
Red flag with the comptroller's office, based on the other expenses.
Would you like to enlighten every one of us instead of speaking in the U?
That's what I'm saying. It's more complicated than I'm able to speak to you just from a risk. That happens when I get in those red ones.
I'm glad that you're hopeful you need to hear.
That's what I'm saying.
Maybe this fellow here is going to owe, owe, like, he wants to do, maybe we need an emotional floor at any second, and they would discuss it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm glad you got to get on the road here. It was nice talking to y'all. If y'all need anything, just give me a holler.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradley has reviewed the contracts as Bert had presented them, and there were some changes that had to be made, that will be made, that, since he had agreed to take out.
They've agreed. There's several kind of changes we're making, so we're not going to sign an agreement that hasn't approved. So it's a board vote, just sign this agreement. It's only going to be after everything I wanted to do, then go to the mayor.
Okay.
You should do this, as men say, that should have to make a bank. If you didn't take out, then the interest rate would not change, but obviously it will change, but the interest rate will remain the same.
Okay. For clarification purposes, if we're going, everyone has the capital outlay now, did you pass those out?
I haven't.
And now it's sales.
But, no, I don't think I have that. I don't have a sheet that looks like that.
That, that is.
We don't have none of those.
The one of Carol.
We are going, making bank as the capital outlay knows what has to be passed on on the next item on the agenda.
What is the? He's saying the next item on the agenda after financing is that.
Oh, 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 okay, RISL.
And I have RISL right here.
But that's only if we're going with the bank, you're not going with.
Right, if you choose to go with making bank, this would be the resolution that would be done. If you, if you choose to go with government capital to go, being, would be the master lease agreement.
Everybody has.
This was just a discussion. Do y'all feel that the AMI, that the, like, the corrected amount, you know, where it's more accurate, do you feel like that's going to be enough where we won't have to worry about this causing a water rate increase, like, on the base, basically, on the standard?
I would hope so. I mean, if we're, if our meters are operating more efficiently and reading every drop that goes to the water, through the meter, then. then, I mean, the state may tell us something completely different, and we, and we may be under a mandate that Brian knows about, that he's not letting the rest of us know about, where we're having to raise our rates annually, and, but I've not heard anything about that, we just received that, that one email, two days before we passed the, the budget, um, saying that we would have to incorporate a water rate increase. But I would hope that if they're reading every drop that goes through, they're reading efficiently, and your water bills are accurate, uh, as opposed to being between five and eight percent inaccurate, then we could hopefully include a rate increase.
I will say that that's also what the utility rate stake is supposed to answer.
That we're.
Coming from the discussion you've made, and you're the first person to help us answer this question.
I'll first say, I, obviously, this thing will make y'all so much easier, so I'm all for, even though I said the other day that I was against it, I am for giving a, maybe not a district or one, but whatever, I'm all for giving the automated system. My concern is how it will impact the minimum bill, that's my only concern I have, because it's a lot harder for me to look people in the eye when I'm charging them more on water bill, you know, it's what, it doesn't, I think.
The rate wouldn't be increasing, so the minimum bill wouldn't change, it's just, we're going to see 100% of what goes through the meter.
That was my question, so there's no intent to raise rates to cause this?
Not specifically to this, no. Not, but, again, the, we're, we're going to have that utility rate information whenever it's completed, and that's going to be a part of one of the discussions that we're going to have, that we just don't, we don't have a finalized piece of that yet. That will impact that more so than this in the media space.
Sorry, that's what I'm telling you. No, we're not saying there's a rate increase.
If the.
There could be something down there.
He said, out of all the ones he done, he had done, the sewer was the second, our sewer was the second word he's seen, so. That's why I'm going.
You called for a motion, I'm not even getting a motion.
I'm sorry.
I, I want Kelly to get, to verify this, um, water is three cents a gallon after a 2,000 gallons, is that correct, on a customer's bill? It's, it's basically $3 per additional thousand, and if we capture an addition, this was the number that everybody did that, if we capture another 1,000 gallons going through a customer's bill, their bill obviously will be more accurate, the cap will be $3 to $5 more per customer captured after we spend $40,000. So that's all I wanted to say, and that was the basic fact of the finance of.
Brian, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the financing, uh, for the AMI system, uh, including, um, initial down payment of 50%. Using, uh, which one was the lowest interest rate, it was making bank, correct?
Making, making.
Using making bank.
Four seven, and what, what year term?
Were there different terms? I thought it was a 10-year term is what there's quoted to us.
There's a five-year, seven-year.
Take your motion to 10-year term.
10-year term, it is, yeah, yeah.